Listening to your goals and dreams is our top priority at West Tennessee Bank. Benefit from our more than 100 years of experience and visit our Henderson branch today. West Tennessee Bank, focused on you. West Tennessee Bank is a division of Decatur County Bank, equal housing lender, member FDIC.
With the one aspect, Mr. Welch, I received a letter today. He is expressing with this letter, it says, "Dear Chester County Government and Commission, he'd like to inform us that he has resigned from his position as Commissioner for the Chester County Government after the money made in 2020. He'd like to thank you for the opportunity for professional and personal development that you have provided him for during the last 15 years. He has enjoyed working for and appreciated the support provided me during his tenure with the County Commission. Sincerely, Johnny L. Welch." So that is the reason he is not here. Next, we'd like to ask for approval of the minutes for the March 8 meeting.
First, John.
Yes, sir. We have a brief reference to the city by Capitol. We have a motion to approve Johnny Garner to... Yes, sir, we have a second. Yes, we have a second with Commissioner Russell Clayton. Any discussion about minutes? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Minutes passed. Next on the agenda, we have approval for the quarterly reports and budget amendments. Start your turn first with the school. And I believe that mine works.
Good evening, brother.
As you said before, you have your quarterly report. I know there's a redundant question because there's a lot of information there, but again, the way Stacy generates this quarterly report, you look at the percent of the budget and you can see how it reflects what we have budgeted at this time of the year. So this would be at that third quarter mark. So we're places where we see the revenue source is good. Some cases exceeds the quarter, a three-quarter mark. And then also on these expenditures, we're on the short end side of some of those cases. But for any of those, if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer and answer.
I'm going to approve the quarterly report.
Second. We have a motion to approve the quarterly report on Mr. Larry Blackstock and seconded by Alan McKinnon. Any discussion on the quarterly reports? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
We have several budget amendments reflected in general purpose as well as...
Say as well as. We have federal, that's right, federal and also... We also have with the new legislation, a new commitment that the state legislators require me to have summer camps, which is to reach those students who are not yet where they need to be academically for their grade level and giving them that boost through the summer month to close that summer learning gap. So that's a new state requirement that starts this summer. And if we do have some funds going into that, that serves some of the needs for expenditures. But again, that is part of something brand new that's included in your packet of budget amendments.
I'd make a motion to approve the budget amendments. What do you think?
I have a motion to approve the budget amendments by Commissioner Tim Crowell and seconded by Commissioner Terry Gerson. Any discussion about the amendments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Let's, yeah, let me make sure. We have included in that, if you remember, was it two or three years ago that we had the reference, which page you generated there and I didn't. On the one that's the debt service, you know, a few years back, we had some projects that we wanted to complete that we have been using our fund balance in the past, but to get what we needed to get done in a more expedient effort, we went into a note with the County Commission. You approved it. But fortunately for us, with our budget as it has been and the revenue sources that came in richer than expected, we have, we have requests to use our fund balance to pay off our note. We have the funds available. And if you remember from that note, the way it was provided to us is the option to be able to pay down the principal without penalty. So it's a good use of the resources that we have. And I think it's a correction that well, our, some of our board members are also very supportive of, that they, they have had, they want to approve this as a group. We went through the financial committee with our board and the full board at the last meeting in April.
And I just included the actual copy of the note that I got and also the amortization schedule, we were even seeing we're going to be saving quite a bit of money this time of the year because we want to pay it off.
And we in turn plan to use those resources in the future to continue to take care of capital projects as the needs arise.
Kind of a no brainer, isn't it?
We think so.
I'll make the motion to approve for this.
Second.
Tim, explain to Joe, this was a motion to approve the payoff of the debt service.
We have a motion by Tim Crowell, payoff of the debt service, seconded by Commissioner Joe Leno. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion to hear it.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next on the agenda, we have the Highway Department, Superintendent Derek Keating.
I'd make a motion to approve the report.
Commissioner Russell Clayton, making a motion to approve the quarterly reports. I need to get to it, seconded by Commissioner Larry Blackstock. Any discussion about the quarterly reports? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion to hear it.
Thank you.
You have...
I have a motion, yes. Let me take just a few seconds to try to explain some things. You see, it's bottom up for the size figure. Last, last year, you knew the director of the highway people, so he told all of us highway people, basically, twenty five percent. We done so. In the meantime, the first, same month, we done some good, but month, it did start declining. So we, we did write through the month. And that being said, we spent some money. So that's what brought about all these amendments here. I have to say, let's see, March, my month, I had twenty-two thousand. And I put one down first, I don't worry about all that. The gas is going up, they make up that nine months. But anyway, that's what these amendments about. Now, some of these amendments we're not told yet, but we took about five, six, seven weeks in this place here. And I want to do some hard to see, and that's pretty, we've got a big figure right here at four or five. And that's here at seven, fourteen, and lots of quick, six tractors in the truck. That's pretty, we've got two major figures right there. But we done a good for the first eight months, and then it's just four now, so true. But that's what these amendments are. I've got them all, I don't know what they are.
Mr. Carr.
Yes, sir.
I have a motion to approve the report.
We have a motion by Commissioner Alan McKinnon to approve the amendments, and then seconded by Commissioner Andrew Hall. Any, any more questions about the amendments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
We sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the trustee of the quarterly report, Lieutenant Bennett. The trustee lands the chair.
Good evening.
We've not had a quarterly reading for about a month now, but we have seen that last Thursday. I hope everybody's happy. Any questions, colleagues?
I know you're not going to lie.
Okay.
Check the check bank account report. Is there something I need to change?
That's something I need to change. Thank you for bringing it up. You'll be continuing to run the next report.
I would like to make a comment.
I have this hard, hard to read.
I'd make a motion to approve.
I second it. We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Tim Crowell and seconded by Commissioner Terry Gerson. Any, any more discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion to approve.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm going to say right quick, I haven't been a big deal, I think a little bit in the weather lately. Seems like we just moved this in September, and now it came out during the beginning of March and April. Kind of getting back on my feet now, but not, not back at work for about a week and a half now. And don't fret, the office has been in great hands. But I can't tell, tell my staff much. I appreciate they take care of me, they take care of things at work. I work some at home, but I didn't worry about the state and the office for one second. I mean, they take care of me and everything is new to me. So I appreciate my staff and I appreciate your understanding.
Okay. That's right, you got that right.
Next, we have the County General and also the county's society of the world, Mr. Gene Dunlop.
Good evening. Did everyone get off together, the finance side, the funding amendments? I ran late with the solid waste and the laundry because I was a little bit behind last week, but we did the damage without, we packed. For begin, County General was just a little bit over the business, but here with all that, we had some everyone coming in and probably many of them did a meeting and put that in. Is anyone having a question about the issue?
I'd make a motion to approve the budget...
I second it.
Commissioner Russell, the financial statement, I'm sorry, by Commissioner Clayton, seconded by Commissioner Higginson. Any more discussion about the some of the financial statement? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Hold on, next is the County General budget amendments. Like I said, we just moved the summer grant for COVID-19, and he thinks that it requires a commission approval, that you get a solid line along, I don't have any permission to move that to the revenue. Anybody have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Mr. Carr, I approve. I second it.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Johnny Garner and seconded by Commissioner Larry Blackstock. Any discussion on the amendments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Budget amendments passed.
Next, next one is the library one. We got some visiting minutes this time, Savannah and I are being followed up. We have some visiting minutes to work on. There's still ones that were saving time, we need to move out of those, but we agree with those, make it kind of very strict.
Motion to approve the library.
We have a motion to approve the library budget amendments from Commissioner Tim Crowell, seconded by Commissioner Hannah Moore. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Not very easy to amend.
And then the next is solid waste reform, the dynamic report, hand visiting minutes.
I'm looking to approve the solid waste.
We have a motion to approve the solid waste.
I second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Terry Gerson. Any, any discussions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion to approve.
And I have one more, I need to get some of those comments. Before we do pay the loan off, I will need to get budget minutes for that. I did not get, get my listen, but we can, we can keep saying next year. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is for the library update. We have Ms. Savannah Gilbert with the libraries. Good to see you back.
Just wanted to talk about the new grant opportunities that we have shown up as a group, the water company. We were, we were seeking the grants from the state to see if it's offered off for all. This is for training, hot spots, they help that offer the public. We just received that, that we did receive that, and it's almost $2,300. So we'll be giving that, and we'll of course pay for a part of our hotspot monthly vacation we have. We'll also go for offering training to make a difference in the quality. Also, we recently got a Southwest electric changer community grant. It was $2,200. This has allowed us to purchase 13 separate books for a variety of ages from high school at Clark Junior Hospital and Tinker Club, through the books of the library to just fill for it. And then we might also, in part of this, every day in our community, we can reach those that may not be able to financially otherwise. We just finished up spending a technology grant. It was about $1,800. With that, we're able to purchase five new computers or four new computers at the library. We also were able to purchase a screen magnifier. This is a device that goes in front of our computer screens, so we have it to use and makes the screen bigger, so that the visual impaired are actually able to use our screens. Also, it is a grant, but we were also awarded a Memphis Zivert program for our summer reading program. And I think you have some information about the summer reading program in your packets that admin's going to come up on our Tuesday seven. But we were one of all the thirty about the state that we've chosen to receive the grant for that twelve grand. I've got all the statistics right there. One thing I'm doing to point out to you is we actually are able to purchase a counter so that we can count the number of people that are coming into the library and using our services. In March, we only monitored half the month, we had 588 visits. We were able to monitor the whole bunch of it. Number April, we had 2,142 visits during the month. So we were very excited to be able to see, you know, how the community is really rising now on a month basis. So I just want to point that out to you all. And the only thing we have to say in this week is we have two board members whose term is expiring on June 11th, Ron Elder and Dorothy Davis. And as a result, I need to elect a pass for two new board members to be put in their place. Their names are Darrell Bird and Yvette Crum. That will take place on July 1st, 2021. It would be for a three-year term on the library board.
Okay, we need a motion to approve two new board members of the library community. They are Darrell Bird and Yvette Crum. And they're to be effective, they need to queue out of first...
Yes, sir.
...of 20 more. So I should get back in time.
Mr. Carr, I'd make a motion to approve the board member for the library.
Mr. Alan McKinnon makes the...
I second it.
Commissioner Andrew Hall, second. Is there any more discussion about the approval of the board members? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you, Savannah.
And I have some information here on the library events. So if you all have any follow-up questions, over to the library or to the members for the question.
Thank you for the information, Savannah. Next, we have the Fire Department update, Chief Hall.
Good evening. I have a whole lot tonight. I do want to mention that the gentleman that works in my office, Brandon Jeffries, will be leaving us around the 30th of the month. He has been hired by the Jackson Fire Department. So he'll start there, reportedly with Academy. It looks like around the 5th or 6th of June. And with that, Mr. Ethan Hanson will be taking his spot. He will start on the 17th of this month. So we have a three continuity, a smooth transition while Brandon does what Ethan will be doing and learn in the office. So, and also Brandon Jeffries' sister passed away last Thursday. She was 27, she was on the way to kidney dialysis, and he went unresponsive in the vehicle on the way down. As far as the service, there's going to be a memorial service the 22nd at 10 o'clock at the Jehovah Witness Church at 45 in White House. That's all the information I have about that. So any questions for me in the Fire Department?
How would you improve the new...
The new brush, I could, thanks. Update, end of July. It's all a lot to chip, and it's out late.
Okay, so we need, we need approval for the employment of Ethan Hanson to take Brandon's place for the Christian County Fire Department.
Mr. Carr, I'd make a motion to approve the report.
We have a motion to approve seconded by Commissioner Alan McKinnon and seconded by Commissioner Larry Blackstock. Any, any other discussion? If not, all approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Next on the agenda, we have the update of the Regional Planning Commission, Commissioner Barry Smith.
Thank you. As you are aware, the Planning Commission is a surgeon for someone to do building inspection and maintenance code enforcement for Chester County. We have had conversations and or interviews with several people about doing the job for Chester County, and we have not found anyone that had their state certification and was willing to do both the code enforcement and building inspection. The Planning Commission had previously agreed, we only wanted to hire one person to do both jobs, not hire two people. We were told at the last Planning Commission meeting on April 20th, by Mr. Skiham of Southwest Tennessee Development District, we could hire someone that does not have their state certifications to do the code enforcement and building inspections and allow one year to get their certification. The Planning Commission unanimously agreed to recommend Dion Davis, Dion is here, Dion can stand up if anybody. See, Dion has worked with the Sheriff's Department, he's worked with the City Police Department, he has a lot of military experience, I'll let him answer any questions that anybody has. But the Planning Commission unanimously recommended him to do the job and give him one year to get the certification. That's a committee recommendation, that makes a second.
Do we have a recommendation?
What?
A question?
What is the sound starting to sound?
That is, it's good. Do we have a recommendation, recommendation for aye?
We have asked two meetings ago to have a maximum amount of, I think, $50,000 paid fees.
So we're not going to exceed that?
We're not, we're not to exceed that.
I'll second that motion.
Do we have a motion? I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner, seconded by Commissioner Tim Crowell. So any more discussion or any questions for Mr. Dion?
How many of these permits will we issue if left them on?
Well, it varies, the residential has been... Because of COVID, now it was down, but I think we had like 26 at the, forgot the time period of last, last year, I believe it was January, it was not June, July, July. But it varies now.
26.
No, we paid about $20,000, Commissioner, approval for him to do that, we paid $50,000 to do 26.
Well, see, that, that would just be partially part of what he would be doing, he'd be perished for the other things to do with the residential building.
With longer prices and everything so high, people in my building now are driving...
Yeah, it is down.
He'll also be, be there for code enforcement. There's so many complaints about such things across the county, that'd be part of his job also.
His job verification and the job description is, is, I guess you say, it's, it's got a lot of qualifications too, what he would be doing.
I think it's a good idea to have an inspector, but I don't know if this is the time to hire one, as much as it's going to cost the county for more homes or things like that.
Well, that would be up to the Commission to decide. That's something we've been working to for a good while to help our contractors to, for a reason, two billion more in our county, because it's so hard and takes too much time to do it online, and still you've got not the person there to do it. it online, and still you, you've got not the person there to do it, and then your inspector comes from another area and you're waiting on him. That's why we were wanting to help our contractor, or we can help our county grow and have a little building in our area. Right now, the city does a great job, and the inspector, the shooter, she does it, and they need cover an area outside of our city limits, but this would be the county, county wide position, and it's just starting off as a residential. Mr. Brandon, he's more qualified in different areas than he would also, one of his duties would be to do our property maintenance inspections, which you'd only have to be in my office to see how many ayes would receive, if he would receive them and he could respond to them, and right now, we can't issue a citation or anything because we don't have an official. So that would be another responsibility that code officials would have.
If he's not certified, can we issue a citation?
Well, that's why we, they're getting classes, and they're, they're getting a week-long class, and I talked with Mr. Planner today, and they have a scheduled one that will try to have one in the summer, and wait, what it does, it's, it's a week-long class, and at the end of the class, you can tell the test.
He can issue a citation, same thing over for if he was starting in Washington.
He has, he has it here, that he has to get his certification.
Just remind everybody, we've had this room full of people several times complaining about such things across the country, and act any consideration there, you vote, don't you conscious, but remember the constituents asking us.
And this last planning commission meeting room had two to come before us, I believe it was two, and was asking questions about our, the building regulations and stuff, and we can have our code official to be able to answer them then, and not have to wait, unless it's an appeal to come in front of our board of zoning bills. And that was, what this is, is. What is the motion here?
Motion to approve the hiring of Dion Davis to be the code official and property maintenance inspector.
Yes, this is just a motion to approve the hiring, and we haven't set a date of hire yet. We would like to get in surrogacy and all first, but I mean, I don't know how long that, well.
If we're going to hire, we need to hire.
The state.
We don't, 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 we don't.
We, we have a motion on the table by Mr. Barry Smith and second by Mr. Tim Crowe.
My motion is to start in July first.
We have a motion to start in July the first.
Correct.
We have, we have, he is, but he's a, is this, this is a, we have a motion on the floor, we need to attend this motion first, and then we'll, we'll, second. For the hiring of Dion, do we need to be a roll call?
We've already voted on spending money.
Okay, all right.
But I think we do need to do a roll call.
Okay, let's do a roll call for the hiring of Dion.
Okay, Johnny Garner.
Yes.
Jerry Low.
No.
Larry Laxton.
No.
Al McKinnon.
Yes.
Andrew Hollis.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins.
Yes.
Russell Plait.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Flar.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Tim Crowe.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Mike Ali-Mend.
Yes.
John Wells.
Todd Lewis.
Yes.
Fifteen four, two aces.
All right, now I make the motion, you can let it start July the first, he goes to work July the first, that's my motion.
That motion passed, and that was to hire Dion, but we have a second motion on the floor, the hiring, and have the start date July the first.
I'm second.
We have a motion by Al McKinnon and, and Tim Crowe, and the second by Miss Ann Moore. Any discussion about that? Hiring back in July the first, twenty-one? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We have a hiring date from Mr. Dion there, so July the first. Dion, that's, I'm sorry.
You can say, that's good, that's good.
Also, I believe Mr. Barry Smith has a, with zoning bills, you're going to.
We approve.
We approve. All right. Next on the agenda, we have approval of the Pride Act, which Mr. Brandon, you can refresh yourself, yes, of visiting parks, and you just refresh on all this, the time.
Can you all believe we have been working on this for eleven months now? I'm sure someone can, if they're familiar with it. And as you know, through your knowledge around the Chester County Solid Waste Department, is that to find a new source of revenue to operate the solid waste program? What's the revenue from the nursing home records taken away? Compounded by enormous financial burden of COVID-19, the Solid Waste and budget committees asked us to find another source of funding. After looking at various programs attempted by other counties, the decision to propose the solid waste convenience fee was made. After we actually, viewed the commission, decided on this fee, we started looking at various means for collection of this fee. Other counties have used different collection methods, but the one we decided to use is, in my opinion, the most cost-effective, one of eight. If you've been around here very long, you know, I, I believe in my staff, and I want to give them credit whenever credit is due. I just want to say right quick, the staff of the trustees office volunteered to collect this property tax. We looked at different methods, selling business costing, involving hiring a collection agency or possibly a utility department to collect it. The figures that we could, that we could come up with were around a hundred thousand dollars, which would be, we would still have to raise more in to cover that cost. So to come back to this, the staff of the trustees office are the ones that have volunteered to collect this fee. At, at the time that we started talking about this, the two staff members were two of the very own, Andrew Hollis and Karen Higgins. They did this out of respect and appreciation of taxpayers in the county, and not for financial benefit, because they would not be receiving a penny of the funds that we collect for the solid waste fee, even though they undoubtedly will experience hidden headaches by disowned property, by the property owners. I do want to thank you as, as a commissioner for appointing and funding and repositioning the trustees office to, to help tackle this effort. I am excited to announce that we have hired Jeanette Walker to administer this endeavor. Jeanette, who's everybody knows Jeanette. She is responsible for collecting, compiling, and sorting data that was not made readily available to us. She has done an outstanding job for backing this information, which will allow us to add the fee to the property tax numbers in October. Thus, streamlined, streamlined the cost of building and allows us to collect and post the fee in a, again, in a more efficient and cost-effective manner. Please note, this fee will be earmarked by the operation of the Chester County Solid Waste Department only. It will not be used for other departments, offices, or services. The Pride Act, which you are about to vote, has been carefully researched by county and state officials, it's been voted on by county and state officials, and approved by county and state officials. It now requires a second vote by you and Chester County Commission. I know there are still questions and comments looming, but I hope that you will vote yes on this Pride Act to approve, and so that we may move forward with the process to commence collections in October. Thank you for your time and consideration. If you have any questions, I'll, I'll let Jeanette to answer. You have any questions, comments, or comments, son? Is there any formula we're using for determining who is going to be picked? We, we have to make this spreadsheet that, that has every residential property and every residential, every residence, you might call it, whether that be a tenant, a bus, any kind of residential property. We, we are making, compiling this information, and the best I can tell you right now, which we blare, is that we are, we're going to cross-reference that information and attempt to put it so that it appears on the tax notice toward the, like, toward the bottom of the page, or at least appears separate from the, the property taxes. Now, we, we fully intend on collecting that fee at the time of property tax expiration. Other counties that have, that have done this program, they collect it all at one time. I'm, I fear that if someone tries to pay just the taxes, they'll come back and pay the fee later, and they're going to be able to. It is a different process as far as collecting, collecting property taxes, but we're going to collect that fee one way or another, and, and, and I don't, I don't need to be a jerk about it, but that's what, how we, that's what I'm likely to do, is collect that fee. So we're going to collect it pretty much by any means necessary. So if you hear people saying, oh, they pay my taxes, and that wouldn't let me pay my taxes, it's because of the future payment, the collection fee, the convenience fee. So it's not going to be fun the first year. We have basically thrown on hardening county, and they have had tremendous amount of success with their, with their program. We're going to mirror it as best, as much as possible, but again, if you have collected, if you have ordered us to collect this fee, then we're going to do it, every how we have to do it.
Can we go ahead and pay that fee, say, tomorrow, or when?
Tomorrow you can, today you couldn't, because you haven't approved the second Pride Act. So we, we, you know, we've got people paying the twenty-one taxes, twenty-two taxes, and you know, we could not collect that fee from Dion, because it's not official. State legislature's passed it, has it been approved? So we're waiting on your vote tonight, and I hope that the last, we've been working, that Jeanette came and worked with us in, in November, and she had worked tirelessly on this project. That's pretty much all that she does. We have tried to train, cross-train, cross-train her with other jobs, testing leader, but we are, as much as possible, dedicated her to this position, because it's at port to us, and we, we know we're, we're planning to build, you know, we're planning to build on that, so. First couple of years is going to be rough, but we, we expect success in this.
I got a question.
Yes.
I'm not liking what you're hearing, I said, oh, for my house, I have to play a festival, my, like, my taxes come up out of external tax. Can I, please, can I walk in there, and once this is passed, and go away to pay that, then for this tax statement, is that?
You can, but the mortgage companies that I have talked to, please understand, we deal with hundreds of mortgage companies every year, and a lot of them do different things. We, we have talked to some of the larger mortgage companies, and they can incorporate that in your monthly payment, your, your festival, you know. But, once we get started, we, you know, in future, if we pay that, we, we will try our best to, to apply it, you know, just like we do every, I guess, but. Are some of these questions? But we, we are looking at, you know, hit on, and we, we're trying to, to answer those questions, and, you know, get a process statement, yes.
How many parcels do we request?
Jeanette, do you have more parcels you run up there, about eight thousand? Nine of them.
But some of them don't have, don't have hours or seven.
I, I can't give you the number right now. I think they barely have ten thousand, some parcels in the county, plus. Marcelles, but that doesn't mean there's ten thousand residences in the county, right? Some parcels will have duplex, triplex, apartment building, some parcels will have nothing. That's what, that's what it is, it's worth the last top six months, so we can do that I can't give you a nice answer right now. By, by October, the tax time runs around, you know, there may be a few discrepancies here and there, and the first year's going to be awful, so if you hear horror stories in the trustees office, you can call us, put an eye, and, you know, just know, we're trying to do the best we can, and the first couple of years will be tough. You got any questions? Do we have to go to average, seven dollars a month? I think we maybe, I think we did go to nine.
That is the second part of the Pride Act, that was, we decided. The first one is to approve the Pride Act as the governor signed this the twenty-third day of April, and we needed to be, we have already passed it once, but we have to pass it since after the Department of State has passed our Pride Act. So we do need a motion.
I make a motion to approve this, Rick.
We have a motion to approve the Pride, the Pride Act, that's written by Mr. Todd, uh, Todd Lewis. We need a second. We have second, Commissioner Karen Higgins. Any more questions?
I, you're going to have to hear me plead one more time to my fellow commissioners. They have, once we put this in place, it will be in place. And just as Brother Tim has pointed out very openly, many people come to the shroom with many complaints about being a co-official for the Pride Act. You ask a month and every year, including special colleagues. We've had many, many people come in here and ask us to go back to the table, do our job, and find an alternate route to funding. Again, not the same, we don't get solid waste. I've heard accounts of that effect, and it's the typical type of misrepresentation we hear from, you know, politicians, to be honest with you. I just need to plead that plea for the constituents, the same ones who we just voted against for to make a new hire, the same ones who we represented when we did push the lay-out folks or reduce people's hours during the COVID, the same ones who were asking for them to pay the salaries for our county employees that we approved two meetings ago. The rest of the county, there's folks out there hurt, and they simply ask us to represent them, that's all I need to do.
We have a motion, and a second on the floor, but we have one discussion?
I'll, I'll quit. So we're not using some of that COVID money to take care of this?
The COVID, the COVID money is already about a hundred and eighty thousand dollar B E for them, and also a thirty-eight thousand dollar loss that went from, come back.
Yes.
So I don't think we're gaining anything.
This, this money will be just only, can be used for solid waste, funding the solid waste.
This is for the honor.
We've already spent all the money.
Pardon?
In the scratch fund we got away, which hasn't received, we haven't, we haven't gathered on this.
Jane, and we wrote, uh, the, 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 the,